Good morning. This is the night time that was noticed and posted for our work session. This is Thursday, April the twentieth, twenty twenty-three. It's eleven o'clock eight M. We're in the Board of Supervisors Executive Conference Room, Melody Lane Bisbee. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion, and we begin with the roll call. District one.
Crosby is here. Good morning.
Two, supervisor English is present. District three.
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling six oh two six oh nine seven five one three or eight 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 six eight zero six seven one four. Conference ID two one four two seven four zero five nine pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero four three two nine two zero zero four direction. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. As always, introductions at our work session are more appropriate when, before a person begins to speak, so if you would give your name and your title before you have your conversation for the record. Today, we're on the county budget for the county attorney's office, and so I'm going to turn it over to Brian McInnes, our county attorney.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, members of the board. I know that earlier in the year, the Civil Division did their kind of yearly presentation to you on civil stats and trends, and I thought coming into this year's budget cycle, it was really appropriate for us to give you some idea of what goes on on the criminal side of the House, which is the larger budget-wise side of the House. So we have this presentation that we give to some other folks who come down asking about problems in the community, and I wanted to kind of quickly scroll through this if you can. So obviously, it's all over the news. Unfortunately, this is what Cochise County is known for right now, right? Is our border crime issues. When we look at what has happened in this area in twenty twenty-two, endangerment and felony flight, two hundred and sixty-one cases just in that, not the board's fiscal year, but the calendar year, two hundred and sixty-one cases. Participation in human smuggling, we filed one hundred and eleven cases, and understand that that statute only became effective September twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-two. Already this year, so we're just looking at basically first quarter, we have, we've charged one hundred and four felony flight events. These are very dangerous issues in our community. We try to stay up on top of it, file them within forty-eight hours, keep the individual in jail if that's appropriate based on their history. And participation in human smuggling, obviously, some of those overlap, those cases some overlap with the felony flight events, but that's one hundred separate charging events. Next slide. Yes, DEMA came through with some money. In particular, what was great about that grant is it allowed us to hire these two additional support staff who are under the grant. Within the attorney track, we only had, let's say, legitimate interest from within the office to go into that position, which would have meant then that that prosecutor could only service this grant and couldn't do other crimes. What we did instead, we came to an agreement with DEMA that we were able to give essentially some incentive to lawyers who worked the grants, provided they tracked their time. So just within the first two months of that agreement, my lawyers logged two hundred and forty-six hours in addition to their, in addition to their regular felony case duties. This is just to handle the problem of felony flight endangerment that we've had, we'll get to this slide, but a number of murder cases because of this.
So just quick, the, oh, you did order two staff.
Yes.
But you can use that grant money to also fund your regular.
Well, we can't fund their normal salary, but we can fund the additional effort hours that are being worked.
So the two hundred and forty-six hours.
Yeah.
All right.
So why is this happening? Because everybody needs a wife. January twenty twenty-one, this kicked off. That's when we had our first first-degree murder case related to this failure to yield event that involved the death of two undocumented individuals. Horrible, horrible accident here in Bisbee, but this is how it's happening. Instagram, Snapchat, social media, et cetera, they are hitting this all day, every day, and telling these folks, look, you make two thousand dollars per body. And how do we fight them? Well, we have to fight it through effective enforcement. We can have all the law enforcement officers that you could ever dream of in the field, but if there's no one there to prosecute that case, nothing happens with it, and they're back the next day. So we can go forward. And this is, this is the tragic cost of it. The lady who passed away in this accident was her sixty-fifth birthday, and a sixteen-year-old juvenile hit her car at roughly a hundred and ten miles an hour and literally cut it in half. So this is our current murder case load that is strictly related to border crime, failure to yield offense. We have nine fatalities within two years. Because it's a failure to yield, it's felony murder, so it's first-degree murder, and we listed out which cases those were. So the next slide. What is this actually looking at? Now, I've been with the office since two thousand and five. Just tell you anecdotally, I remember getting my first first-degree murder case, and everyone in the office knew about my first-degree murder case in two thousand and ten, and it was like, ooh, there's a murder. There's been a murder. That's what I want Cochise County to be, that it's shocking that we have a murder. Instead, in twenty twenty-two, we came to the point where every single prosecutor, felony prosecutor in my office, including me, had at least two first-degree murder cases. I still have one on my docket, Lori.
I have two.
And so that's the elected official and the chief criminal deputy, as well as the other felony prosecutors. But that's what we're looking at right now. Twenty homicide cases between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three, and total deceased victims, twenty-five. Now, important to note when we talk about a homicide case is when we get into, this relates specifically to one of our funding requests, the victim in a homicide case is all surviving first-degree relatives. So children, spouse, brothers, sisters, et cetera, all of those individuals have a right to notice, they have a right to be heard in court, they have a right to input, and we provide them advocacy services through our victim witness division. You can imagine, in case, one of the cases we have, we have three deceased victims, they're all from Mexico, we are all, we are required to make contact, make efforts to reach out and make sure these, their family members have these services. And even if they didn't have a right under the law, it's the right thing for us to, right? So I wanted to include some historical markers here, if you will. Twenty twenty-two, largest year ever for felony violence, over two hundred and eighteen felony cases filed by our office. Law enforcement does not direct file felony cases, we file them directly. Misdemeanors, total number was thirty-four, forty-nine. I threw that in to understand that we also, we have one full-time misdemeanor prosecutors and then, or prosecutor, and then, and then two that kind of split loads, and we have a felony lawyer also that takes a justice court. But those are filed by law enforcement. We don't direct file the misdemeanors typically. So on misdemeanor cases, that's one area where we have no control over the flow. Law enforcement has a big weekend in misdemeanors, then my misdemeanor lawyer has a big calendar in a few weeks, basically. Twenty twenty-three, we are already first quarter at five hundred and twelve felony complaints, which means we're looking at potentially two thousand this year. Misdemeanor, it looks like it'll go a little higher than last year as well. But to give you an idea of balance, twenty fourteen, the year before I took over, the office filed six hundred and fourteen felony cases. So we well overdoubled that number. First year I was in office, we filed eight hundred and fifty-two, and unfortunately, it's just kind of ticked up and ticked up. And then I threw this slide in here to kind of give better perspective on what things look like. These are all of the agencies that we service, because we are the filing entity essentially. Yes, the Attorney General's Office is capable of filing felony cases in the county, but it's a very small percentage of what the courthouse sees, and instead, we service basically everyone with a badge that's in this community, to include federal agencies, and we handle direct referrals from DEA, from HSI, especially in particular on the human smuggling side. We've done a lot of HSI cases. We have a very good relationship with them. Thank you.
How did you have unknown?
Unknown? We step back to that, that those are probably cases that are a combination of agencies, and it's not designated as to what agency was the primary. And so it's usually, it's in an initial stage. Yes, we've charged it because we got the PC statement, probable cause statement, let's say, from the sheriff's department, but in actuality, it's Sierra Vista PD who took the accident, and they're gonna, we'll update it once we have it. And then we can't talk about criminal justice without talking about drugs. Fentanyl, as everyone is aware, if you watch the news at all, is taking over as the primary crusher of our communities. This is a fatal drug, and what we are looking at here typically, typically, thankfully, if you will, fentanyl makes its way from the port of entry in El Gallo to Tucson, and that's where our fentanyl dealers go, believe it or not, they leave the border to go get their fentanyl to then come back and deal it in our community. However, go to the next slide. Not always the case, this is seizure in February this year. Give you an idea of why this is a driver in the community, yes, it's the Mexican cartel that is pushing this on us, but fifteen thousand pills, in the event that you buy a pill in Douglas, it's one to five dollars. If you're buying in bulk, it's usually one dollar. If you get, if you can get that to the East Coast, you will make three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So you go from fifteen grand upfront, it's not a, it's a pretty good return on investment, if you will. So that's why it's coming through, that's why it's being pushed in such large quantities, and it's rather cheap and easy to make. When we look at our office, at least from the criminal side, we have six full-time felony prosecutors, and they are prosecuting over fourteen hundred felony cases. Separate from our border crimes, we are still a county attorney's office. Our community is still a community with all the problems that communities have. We've had, unfortunately, horrific child sex abuse cases come through, multiple homicides that are separate from our border crimes cases, and all the usual burglary, vehicle theft, fraud, DUI, domestic violence, et cetera, et cetera, good name. We don't have a choice, and you have a choice in some sense of what areas you choose to focus on or what your priority level, but realistically, we have to deal with the crime in our community, we have to find effective ways to deal with it. And so I, kind of, this is the last slide, because, you know, the border isn't our only problem, I get it, it's when people come to talk to us about, in a sense, we're here to talk to you about the whole problem, which is being able to continue to keep up with this. I think that's the slideshows show.
So you have six full-time felony prosecutors. In the criminal division, how many lawyers do you have?
In, so in criminal, then it's eight, well, nine with Lori. Oh, and I always forget our juvenile prosecutor, I'm sorry, I shouldn't do that, so it's ten.
And you're saying that six of those have taken on extra work in order to be able to meet the needs of the grant?
Actually.
No.
Spread that out, with the exception, I think, of Lori.
I'm the only criminal attorney that doesn't participate in the grant, although I still do the caseload because that sixteen-year-old who killed the sixty-five-year-old woman, that's my case, I just don't get the extra money. So we have ten attorneys that get seven thousand dollars a year, increase in salary for this year, fiscal year and next fiscal year, because they track time and they do extra cases above and beyond. We let our juvenile prosecutor, who does a lot of the juveniles who come down here for smuggling, and we let our misdemeanor attorneys take on some of those cases too, and they go into PPK and they track their time. And, you know, we did have, in addition to the two internals that applied for that job, which would have left us with not being able to fill their spot, because we had an opening for over a year with no one coming down to fill it, we had two retired Maricopa County attorney people apply, but they were expecting a salary of one thirty, which is what the other counties are paying, and we were offering one ten, and they're not going to come down here for that.
And as we look at the realities, and I know you guys just got done with the court system that has a lot of asks, and I think throughout the justice system, you're seeing a lot of asks, and there's, the reason for that is numbers are way up, our county underperforms in terms of payment, and when we look at the reason to go into public service, right? I remember when I started, oh my gosh, I get health insurance? Absolutely, I need that for my daughter, right? I need that, that's great. Now there's open markets for health insurance, so it's not the same, and people don't think the same about retirement plans as they did in two thousand and five.
We have two felony attorneys who are in their eighth year of their ten years of government service, and so if we don't pay them market rate, then they're, they're gone. They both have domestic relations experience, they're going to go open a shop in Sierra Vista and make way more money.
Right now, they're just getting their loans waived by the feds once they make that ten years of service and ten years of payment. Now, at the same time, maybe they're not gone, right? Because they're so committed to what we do, but we don't know that. So when you look, and that's the Civil Division presentation, you guys already saw it, so I didn't want to go through it again, if you need me to pop it up, I can't, but what we're looking at is a strain, right? That's why there's so many asks, there's a giant strain on the system, and there's a giant strain when we talk about the county's ability to pay and competitive pay. When we look at our specific funding requests, one of them is, we put it in because we were, we were asked to put it in, it was an increase in our item, it's increasing our witness fees, court costs, et cetera, budget line. Why do we quote "need that"? Well, because you can't try a murder case without paying the doctor, without paying the ER doctor, without the expert, if you don't have one in-house, which we don't.
Or even flying in civilian witnesses.
Or.
That we need to prove our case.
Yeah, paying the cost for transporting all the witnesses who may be in any different place at this point, and all those costs that are associated. The other one is, we have a potential, so I'm asking you to fund it, but understand that you may not ever pay for it, which is, there's a potential that our VOKA grant will fall very far short. Now, the percentage that we keep getting told, that's something that comes from the feds down to the state, then to the individual prosecutor's office. Initially, they were saying it's a fifty percent cut, which would mean, which would mean somehow losing one and a half of our three victim advocates. Now they're saying it might be as low as twenty-five percent, but I believe our request is.
We requested a fifty percent.
Yeah, at fifty, with the understanding and commitment, I'm not spending any of that money unless they actually fall short. Now, that can be fixed tomorrow with the signing of a budget that includes, at the federal level, that includes the appropriate funding amount for VOKA, that just hasn't happened, and so I need to plan ahead in that way in our department. The other is really important, we've mentioned a little bit, Lori mentioned PPK, but our prosecutor by carpal system, which now the defense has defense by carpal, that the person who runs that system for us, when she was initially hired, she was hired to supplement our ability to redact body cam and other digital evidence. She took on the responsibilities of PPK, she got us upright, if you will, above the dirt with PPK. We have one of the best systems in the state, hands down, because I talked to other prosecutors because of her work in that system. Now, administrative officer, the courts gave us the grant for PPK, right? The initial to buy it. They had a, they had a thought process there, which was using PPK is going to allow them to connect to the court system and also to the Arizona Department of Public Safety, it's called disposition reporting system. Why is that important? If all these three systems connect and link together properly, then someone who gets convicted tomorrow of a violent felony offense, let's say, his disposition will immediately be updated in all of Arizona and federal records that he's been convicted of first-degree murder. That's an important thing. We have someone from a year ago who's currently in DOC, who has no disposition reported for his offense. Doesn't look like anything ever happened. So she's taken on the management of that responsibility as well, working with DPS, working with the courts, and integrating those systems, and then finally, because she just takes stuff on, she's agreed to do all the training. So I, I've trained people how to make drinks at a bar, I've trained people as lawyers, et cetera. She is a staff person training lawyers on a computer system and needing to keep their attention. So it's a big ask for me in terms of, it's not really a big ask in terms of money, but I really need that reclass to happen. Two reasons, one, retention, to just be really honest, even though it's a public meeting, I don't think she's on the screen, hopefully, she goes to the yearly conference on PPK every year, someone could pay her double what she makes right now tomorrow. That's how good she is, and, and then we would be sunk. So then it's retention, but then it's also the ability to replace. I have to, in the event that we lose her, I have to know that I can recruit in a person who would take on similar responsibilities. So that's kind of our reality. Our other two asks are also important, but I understand how many asks everyone has, but just looking at the caseload, I don't know how they're doing it, I'm scared, I don't know how my lawyers are doing it, but they come in every day and they keep doing it. They keep charging cases, they take on new cases, they're still working their old cases. Having a murder case as a prosecutor is a big thing, it's a big mental task, and so all of them having at least two, and then also doing all of these other cases and keeping up with that is really impressive, it's really commendable to them, but if I could get one more lawyer that we can spread out amongst things, then that will alleviate things. Obviously, we'd have a time for recruitment and have to figure out who we could get to come fill holes and prevent additional holes from cropping up. And then additionally, we asked for another support staff individual, but when we look at both sides of the house, the amount, just the sheer volume of cases that we're pushing through, if you don't have sufficient staff, mistakes get made. Now, mistakes being made can mean different things depending on what industry you're in, right? If, if you, the lube tech over a tiffy lube doesn't put in your, the bolt that holds your oil in, you'd run out of oil and your car blows up, right? And insurance covers it. If we miss a court date, then someone who committed some very serious crime walks out of jail. And so that's, that's my concern, is I need to have sufficient staff that, a good example is yesterday, one of my attorneys, her child was sick, so suddenly she's gone, and then someone else has to walk out because they're feeling the stomach illness, now I've got to figure out, is anybody missing anything? Who's covering what right now? And let's make sure that everything keeps flowing. So I think that covers all the asks, yeah. And, and that's us, that's our system.
You, you didn't, you didn't put any dollars to these things, and I probably didn't catch them all. The VOKA grant, are there dollars attached to that, obviously?
Yes, the fifty, the fifty.
I mean, if you put it in the stuff, I mean, obviously, we didn't see this until we got it, so if it's in there.
Yeah, the specific numbers are in each, are in each fund's manifesto.
I, I didn't pass the money.
Okay.
Oh, that's why they didn't see. One was keeping those close to the vest.
Right. Well, and the reclassification, what, what's the cost there?
The reclassification would be a ten thousand dollar initial cost and then twelve thousand with EREs moving forward every year.
Support staff, are you asking for one, two, what?
It's one.
One?
It's one, fifty thousand dollar salary with sixteen thousand seven hundred EREs, the total of sixty-five hundred.
What classification is that?
A paralegal.
And then you have an attorney list, a full-time attorney?
Attorney is one.
We did, we did it at a hundred thousand, and that would be with the EREs of twenty-seven thousand.
Eight, never mind. There's it. Sorry.
Okay, sorry I didn't get it all, but maybe I can find it in the, in the other information. Paige, did you have any questions? Come.
Well, I just want to say that it's easy to see why you would need to increase your staff, just be, your numbers, and I'm sure you feel the same way I do, that I doubt this volume of criminality is going to decrease anytime soon, based on a bunch of different factors, which I don't need to say. But I do want to congratulate you for your cohesiveness and your constancy in keeping things rolling regardless of the trouble that's caused. Thank you. And also, I'd like to ask if, if there are, is, is this situation, you say it's Cochise County, and the sheriff sometimes mentions that we're just conveniently located and we get more, you know, for a while we had less traffic, but we get more from time to time. Are other counties having similar problems? You know, like Pinell County, are they still a mess? Because they were, they're not on the border yet, but they have often had lots of problems.
Right.
Is this everywhere or just us?
It's, it's not necessarily everywhere, because there are different dynamics to what our, when we talk strictly about border stuff, so let's say, there's different dynamics to what portion of the population our local cartel is responsible for attempting to enter into the United States. So if you switch over to Yuma, they don't have the same failure to yield problem, but that's because the fees are lower, because the individuals who are crossing are strictly coming to give up directly to Border Patrol. The individuals who are crossing here have paid an enhanced fee, and they're full camo outfit, and we happen to be, we just, I mean, it's one of the things that makes this beautiful, right? We've got all these mountain ranges, we've got all these beautiful trees and waterways, et cetera, it happens to be an excellent place to navigate these folks through, so.
So we don't really have anything to compare to, except for we're a little bit like, it's hard to work here. It's harder to work here than other places.
Right.
And we could never meet the, we could never pay enough to make it easier to work here. here. I wouldn't say that.
And that's that's the distinction, right, is because one can say that, oh, well, the cost of living in Phoenix is is higher, right? So of course their salaries are higher. However, how do most people live? Most people go to work, go home, maybe Uber, eat something at home and watch Netflix.
Yeah.
So their cost of living doesn't increase all that much compared to, if you come to Cochise County, most, I think, all but one lawyer lives in Sierra Vista. So they're going to drive sixty-two miles a day at the gas prices that are currently effective. My staff is doing that drive. Their cost of living is still going to be comparable to Phoenix because of the additional, basically, what it takes to live here.
Right. And some things are more, you know, some things cost more here. I've always had a hard time understanding why the cost of living was higher in other places. I mean, rental homes in Wilcox are up to sixteen hundred a month. They're probably higher.
Sierra Vista is really high, too.
Probably higher in Phoenix, but.
And we could and they compete with the people on post who have the government paychecks and subsidies for the housing market in Sierra Vista.
Across the board, I feel for the the wages, you know, the whole, everybody that presented, of course. And we're doing a market study, so we're at the county for our county things. And today we're talking to courts and the the whole judicial side, which is different.
Well, I I would say that the defining moment for me was filling up my gas tank and realizing that inexpensive to operate car, realizing that the cost of one tank of gas was more than I make in an hour. And I'm the elect, the highest paid person in my office. What is that doing to my front desk person? So that might have been a tangent, sorry.
Yeah, I just, this one, wanted to talk a minute about comparing to other counties.
Tom, did you have any question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to note that I understand that, as I said in the previous meeting, our courts and our attorneys are a fundamental function of government. However, I can't be wowed, especially if it has to do with law enforcement, but the general public can be, so it seems like an irresistible temptation for law enforcement officials to talk in terms of these statistics because the public eats them up as justification for spending more money. Make no mistake, I hate dope. I've seen what it does and I hate what it does. And I'm thankful for all the dope that gets caught, but how much meth or heroin or opiates makes it into the US? So I would like to make the point about apprehension statistics. To the extent that we prevented illegal entry, we would produce that much fewer statistics. There would be that many fewer failures to yield, there would be that much less incarcerate incarceration costs and costs to try these criminals. So my position continues to be to prevent illegal entry. That concludes my remarks for this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, we've only heard from one side of your office. We probably need to hear from the the other side, the civil side.
Well, we had given you the the update back in February when we came in the yearly update. I have the presentation, if you need that. I hadn't prepared anything in particular for today since we had done that.
Okay, but we haven't seen the asks. Do you have asks?
I think any asks are all included.
Our asks are all inclusive.
Any other questions, Ed?
No, I don't.
Tom, is that your final statement?
All that'll do for now, Madam Chair. Thank you so much.
Well, I think when we get the numbers, and and we always need to make the statement is that federal justice is more than one office.
Absolutely.
We have all of these offices to contend with. And I, as one person of the board, have no idea how much money we will be able to raise in taxes. And and so that's really where the hard decisions are going to be made, is the fact of trying to balance, maybe not one side of criminal justice with the other, but to try and 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 keep the system whole in in some manner as as we try to move forward. So we we have a new budget person. I haven't seen any machinery in his office where he's creating dollars.
Please don't print money.
But he's trying to manage what we have and and see what we can move forward from this year and and what we might be able to get from the public in the next year. And and certainly, your 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 information will be considered. So that's that's all I can say at this point is that, you know, we want to hear from you what your what your asks are. And then we'll have the tough decision of deciding how to divide it up once we figure out where the money is going to come from. But I can tell you that from my perspective, every board I've served on, the the bottom line is we want to take care of our people first. And I think that's one of the reasons we made a commitment to pay more of their health insurance, because our our people, no matter what positions they work in, they're important to us and we need to to let them know, as well as the department heads, how much we appreciate the fact that they work for Cochise County. So we'll do what we can. And having said that, our next meeting will be today, April the twentieth, at two thirty in the executive conference room, and it's a work session specifically with the Florida office. It's work session with you, John. Thank you.